Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Brown, Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Yeah.
Mayor Rickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell?
Yes.
If you'd like to do the indication before you finish that potato sentence.
I'm gonna pre for the potato.
And the hands that.
Those by our heads, please. Eternally gracious God, for all that you've done for us. For the many blessings you've allowed us to involve ourselves in. For this fast Thanksgiving. Thanking God for all that you've done and means to us, we thank you. Bless this city of ours. Bless it in such a way that it continues to expand itself in meaningful and positive ways. And that we are able to sense and feel. The Spirit of God as he moves in us and through us. We ask it in your name, amen.
Amen.
Well, welcome everyone to our work session today. And thank you Mayor and Council for a little grace. I know some of us are kind of coming in in a flurry due to different events today. I know the mayor had something and then Mayor Protim and I attended a very lovely swearing in for Senator Overton Walker. So we're literally just wrapped it up as he was speaking and came on over. So if you see us take some bites of soup or whatever, please forgive us. We'll get started with our first presentation, which is the University of South Carolina Health Sciences Campus. And all of our university friends are here to include their consultant, Ms. Melanie Brown, the president and CEO of Restoration 52 LLC. Hey, Melanie. So I'll let her take it from there because it looks like she's got.
I have a colleague with me. Is this not on?
No, we need you to.
Yeah. Okay.
You don't carry a smile.
Smile. Good afternoon, I'm Melanie Brown with Restoration 52. I am a development consultant with the lead developer on this project, Gil Bain. I have my colleague with me today, Heather Mitchell. And she is with Boudreaux, which is the lead design team on this project as well. So we just wanted to come in and speak with you all about the progress that's being made with the new University of South Carolina's Health Science Campus. The new School of Medicine, which is moving from the VA campus and going to have its own identity within the Bull Street District. So I'll just tell you a little bit more about that project and show you some of the final updated renderings as well. If I can get it to. Down, thank you. So today we'll go through a quick team introduction, some of the project introductions, the design concepts we'll go over with you all. Our community engagement, economic inclusion approaches throughout this process. And then any time line milestones, as well as we have a new website where you can always stay up to date with this project. With that said, it takes a whole team to pull off a project of this size. And so, as I mentioned, we have our lead developers, which is the Gil Bain team. I'm partnered alongside them as a code, as a development consultant. And then we also have the Gil Bain Building Company, which is a separate company from the development team that is the lead general contractor on this project alongside actively engaged with local brownstone here in the Cummings Group. And then we have Heather Mitchell, who is here, who leads the Boudreaux Design Firm, as well as the SLAM Collaborative, which is, which are the experts in the medical space from a design perspective. Just quickly, here's our leadership team. And so you have myself and Heather here once again. And these are other of our, many of our other colleagues that you may have seen throughout this time. And with that said, I'll pass it over to Heather.
All right, so meaningful and purposeful. Reverend McDowell said this project is certainly that in an honor of a lifetime for those of us who are involved in designing it. And it's part of a long history. When we were getting ready for this project, we realized that Boudreaux did its first project for the University of South Carolina in 1981. And us and the Gil Bain team, Gil Bain is also here in Columbia and have worked on many significant projects throughout the city for the university. And this is really the kind of crown in that jewel. And so we're really excited to share with you and our reviews. Many of you have seen this presentation before and it's got updated features and hopefully as a refresher as we get ready to break ground, which will happen in January. So it is real and around the corner. And we also have with us today Rebecca Best and Derek McGee, familiar faces from the university in support of the project. So we are on 16 acres in the Bull Street District, which I will show you on a map in a moment, which was donated by Hughes Development to the foundation and then turned over to the university for purposes of this project. The new building, the School of Medicine and all of its allied research is over 310,000 gross square feet. So this is a very, 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 very large and significant building. There are three components to the building. One is the research wing, which I mentioned. One is what is a commons area, which is your main entry, your public spaces, the library, shared spaces among the building and the community. And then we also have the health education component, which is all the simulation and the classrooms and the interactive learning spaces that are hallmarks of the School of Medicine students. So this is where the site is located, as you all know very well. And it is, the yellow represents the 16 acres at the, close to the intersection of Hardin and Colonial. And it is just immediately to the east of the park that you also future focused invested in and which now really we're thinking of as the front lawn of the School of Medicine. So now we're zoomed into that 16 acres and looking at a recent site plan. The building is in the shape of a C. And it will be the first building on the campus of many planned for the future. And it is literally at the center and the heart of the campus because it will set up for future growth around it and including structured parking. There is also a central utility plant on my right here, which will feed mechanical systems into the building in the form of chilled water. And so that is sized to grow with the plant, with the building as it grows as well. The C shape helps form the beginning of a very traditional university green quadrangle. So the indoor outdoor spaces that are such a hallmark of the university and its design guidelines will be featured prominently here. And so that'll be outdoor study and event space for the university community. On the bottom of the plan is labeled here Cooper Drive, but we now understand it'll be named Barnwell. It's the extension of Barnwell Street as it ultimately comes all the way around the park in the master plan for the Bull Street District. And the main entry you see is the arrow is on the north side of the building, north, geographic north is to my right on this plan. And so that'll be the main formal entry. And along Hardin is the research wing and the building scale steps down toward the park. You'll see in the renderings in a moment. There is an exit, a right in and a right out along Hardin as well, but we anticipate most vehicles will arrive from Colonial and into the site along the park. There is considerable surface parking for the School of Medicine students and faculty and staff who work in the building, close to 700 spaces. Those are all viewed as temporary spaces because the master plan will take those over as new buildings come online and as parking decks are built to support the parking. And again, all of this is in keeping with the Bull Street Design Guidelines and Form Based Code, which you all partnered with Hughes to develop originally as well. And Hughes has been an enormous partner along, you know, lurking closely with us along the way in terms of approvals and design reviews as well. And a shout out to the city and Mrs. and her team with the park coming online. I'm sure you all are aware that it's changed the floodplains for the better on this part of the city land. And so that's been very important to get this remapping through FEMA, which is happening in its final throes as we speak, just in time for the groundbreaking. To get the site, there were pieces of the site that were in the 100-year floodplain, but are no longer in the floodplain. Okay, so if you turn right on to Colonial, this is the front door of the building, the very formal portico in the center that welcomes you into the main entry lobby. You can see some of the university colors, the buff colored brick, there'll be limestone on the building as well at the center portico and along the columns and the colonnade. Again, these timeless materials, similar color palette to the School of Law, also a city landmark. And again, but also the spirit of innovation. There's a lot of glass, a lot of open, a lot of contemporary architecture that speaks to the urban character of the design district that is Bull Street. And also the forward-thinking nature of the research that's happening inside the building and in the School of Medicine. As you come around, you're now up in the air looking from Page Ellington Park toward Hardin Street. Hardin Street is in the background. This is the education wing of the building. And it's got state-of-the-art simulation and clinical spill space. It's got numerous small group study spaces and classrooms. There's classrooms at the end of this wing. And also a feature of the building for the public and the community, at the end of the wing is a cafe. So that will be open to the students, also to the community as well. And so that's very exciting. And then you can start to see into the courtyard, which is here. So this is your view looking toward the north. And this portico entry from the courtyard also enters you into the main lobby space, a very large event space that I'll show you a rendering of in the moment, in a moment. Now we're along Hardin Street, driving towards Prisma. Obviously, the proximity with Prisma is very important to the university and this project. This is the research wing, again taller space, the mechanical penthouse exhausts all the research and the anatomy lab. At the top of the building, you've got a lot of graduate students, medical science graduate students doing research in the building. Their write-up spaces and computational analysis spaces will be light along Hardin. That'll be lit up at night. And you've got a stair tower as a marquee marker there on that corner of the building as well. Now you're inside the active learning theater. This is one of the key hallmark spaces on the ground level at the main lobby. And this is the flexible space, a lot of interactive technology for the larger School of Medicine classes, but also for events and colloquia. We really envision that this will be the heart of any medicine, medical activity, symposium colloquies in the state as it comes online. And then this is the view of that main lobby that I described when you walk in through that formal portico, you're looking through the space. The active learning theater that I just showed you is on the side. And straight ahead, you're looking through to the courtyard. The building will be filled with natural lights and very welcoming and inviting, really speaking to healthcare and a space of nurturing and welcoming space in the way that they're teaching the students to provide healthcare to their future patients.
Heather, how will that be connected with the potential neurological hospital?
Yes. So the neurological hospital is envisioned to be on this site as well. And it will be on the southern end of the site. So the, right about here. So then that'll start to.
The research will go, keep growing on this side.
Right, exactly. So there's space for two other buildings and a parking deck on the north end of the site.
That's on the other side?
Yeah, back there in the corner.
Is where the neurological hospital, that's also been announced and funding is provided for that design process to begin as well. And so that'll be another, you know, again, spinoff, exciting future design project as well. So in terms of milestones, we have delivered the very early site development construction documents, the steel and structure are out to bid as well. And those will position the project to start construction in January. The land disturbance permit has been submitted to the city this week. So we're very excited about that. And then we will have construction documents detailed for the building finishing up in this February and May timeframe. Again, and groundbreaking, you all should mark your calendars, is set for January 23rd at 3 o'clock. And so that's a very exciting moment for the state and for the city as well. And for the formal groundbreaking, it is a 30-month construction duration. So it will open to welcome students in the summer of 2027. So the August will be the, 2027 will be the first class who begins taking classes in the School of Medicine. And so that is where we are. Community partnerships have been very, very important. There's been a lot of outreach. Again, many of you have participated in those with the neighborhoods that surround the site with the business organizations. We were most recently with the North Main Business Association. And really just making sure people are aware and excited and answer any questions or concerns the community has about the project. And certainly, as I mentioned, Bull Street has been a tremendous partner all along. And so this is just a little bit of a summary. We've met with Richland County as well, Lexington County, certainly some of the university advisory committees, the Council of Neighborhoods. And so we'll continue to do follow-ups and updates. And that's one thing we would welcome your input on if you have any organizations or community groups, neighborhoods that you think we should outreach or might have questions or benefit from a similar presentation, we are glad to do that as well. So MWBE, Melanie, do you want to hit that kind of outreach?
So in addition to a lot of the external stakeholder engagement that we've been doing, we've made sure to at least have a touch point almost monthly at this point with various different stakeholders with this project. And one of those stakeholders is really around our goal for 30% MWBE participation. So we have set a targeted goal of having about 30% MWBEs participate in this project. And so we've been actively engaging in that space as well. We've now had three active outreach sessions with our MWBEs. The first session was held in April. We had over 200 participants attend. Then our second, more intimate session, which was more package specific, so those packages that Heather just mentioned that we've now kind of starting to finalize, we had about 25 in that more intimate setting for very specific packages. So I would say that that journey is going very well in regards to how we are actively engaging.
The respondents, Midlands oriented or?
The majority have been Midlands oriented, which is also a beautiful thing to see. We have been very intentional, but ensuring that the local business community is also engaged.
Great.
And so with that, we always believe in starting at the top whenever you do set a lofty goal, such as the one that we do have with 30% MWBE participation. And so what that means is that four out of the eight teams that are teamed together on this project are already within the MWBE category. And so Gil Bain really goes the extra mile to demonstrate, they don't only talk the talk, but they walk the walk with my company Restoration 52 being one of those MWBEs at the leadership table. And so this is just quickly in regards to how we are actively engaging our MWBEs. There's a process that we go through to ensure that we're not only just going out there and having these outreach sessions, but we're looking at capacity building as well for your local businesses here and your local MWBEs. And so with that said, as I stated, we started our outreach in April of this year. It will run through mid of 2025 when we'll start releasing those contracts to the MWBEs. But so far, so good. We're, we have a lot of actively engaged local businesses here with this project. In addition, so that you can always stay aware and updated on this project, we have launched a website. And so if you have a phone, you can always take that out, scan the QR code. But we'll also send this information out to you so you can have access to that website. The website will host a lot of information as we continue to progress with the project. And once again, you can always feel free to reach out to us, but if you have any additional questions, we would love to be able to answer those for you.
Melanie, I do want to say this, I want to thank you and Heather. A long time ago, I want to say a long time ago, we had this conversation via Zoom. It was not as detailed as it is now. We talked about what's available there on Bull Street. We talked about, talked about that possibility. And at the very beginning, you convinced me that this is something we need to do on Bull Street. We thank you for your leadership, both you guys, we thank you for that. And we thank you for taking this and putting it on paper where we can see it. And that's, and a lot of folk have seen that and they're tired about that. So thank you all so much for that.
Thank you. If no other comments, if there's any media present in the room, I'm not sure, but we do have a media one pager that can make it easier for you if you would like that. So thank you.
And we'll make sure our public relations folks get it.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you. You gone already?
I think Ralph stepped out right when it was done. But we do have our federal legislative update next, which will, we're always thankful to have our Washington, our Washington assistants here with us. Mr. Ralph Garbushian and Ms. Deborah Dehaney Howard with Capital Edge LLC. Are you good, Ralph?
I'm good, yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Get a little bit of water.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thought I had a few more moments. Good afternoon, it's good to be here. I'm Ralph Garbushian with Capital Edge, work for the city in Washington. And my, my colleague, Deborah Dehaney Howard is here with me. Going to provide a federal update, just a quick overview, going to talk, I know a lot of us are focused on what's going to be happening with the new administration, new Congress, but want to talk a little bit about unfinished business in the lame duck session of Congress. Going to talk really quickly about implementation of the infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act. Talk about regulations, because there's a lot of those that impact the city. And then finally, I am, we are going to look ahead at what we might be looking at in the, in the next administration and the next Congress. So really quickly, unfinished business, I think this is an understatement. Congress returned from the election and the recess with a long list of unfinished business to either tackle or in most cases, I think punt to the 119th Congress. So that unfinished business, that's, that's the list of unfinished business. That's not a comprehensive list, but, but in terms of, of issues that impact the city or of interest to the city, that's, that's the unfinished business list. I think top of the list is FY 2025 appropriations. We are now two months into the fiscal year, it's December. So we are two months into the fiscal year and, and Congress has not finalized FY 2025 appropriations. The federal government is operating under a continuing resolution that expires on December 20th. And those are the other, that's the other list of unfinished business. Those bottom two, I'm going to talk about a little bit later on. So I mentioned Congress enacted a continuing resolution that expires on December 20th. The House and Senate are technically working with the same discretionary spending cap, but in reality, the Senate has done some budget gimmicks and so on, where they're able to avoid a lot of the cuts. And one of our handouts is our funding chart. This is, we do this every year. This is our effort to track the appropriations process for programs of interest to the city. And if you look through that, you'll notice that, that the House has pursued a more austere budget than the Senate has, even though they're technically working with the same discretionary spending cap, that's because of budget gimmicks. But all of that said, whether they, they finalize the FY 2025 appropriations bills or pass another continuing resolution is really, I think, up to the president-elect. And I think if I had to bet, I would bet on a continuing resolution that runs through March 20th. So one of the things that they'll punt to the 119th Congress is FY 2025 appropriations. That's not unprecedented. FY 2024 was completed in March of this year, so a solid six months into the fiscal year. Other unfinished business, a farm bill. There is talk that they might be able to get work on a farm bill done, but I think the most likely scenario is, is that expired actually last year, is another one-year extension of current law to give themselves yet more time to do a long-term reauthorization of the farm bill. The farm bill is important for the city in terms of nutrition programs. And then the National Flood Insurance Program, I, I rarely say I'm 100% confident on anything, but I'm 100% confident that Congress will not pass a long-term reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program. They'll do another one-year extension. That program faces some pretty tough challenges and, and Congress has kind of resorted to passing one-year extensions of that. So the outlook for unfinished business, I said on appropriations, could be a three-month, a CR that runs through March, it could be they finish work on it. I, I read this morning that they are coming together on a defense authorization bill and they'll likely enact that before the end of the year. And, and it looks like that means the defense authorization bill will become the last train out of town, a vehicle for any other legislation that Congress is looking to get off of its plate and move, and move so that they don't send that to 119th Congress. If you look at the House and Senate schedules, they're doing a lot of post office namings, they're doing a lot of parks and lands bills, they're doing a lot of technical corrections to the code where, where the statutes need some cleaning up. That's all pointing to the signs of everything's going to attach, get attached to the defense authorization bill. And, and that's going to be the last train out of town. So local government priorities, that first bullet is in the context of FY 2025 appropriations. Like I said, the House outlines a lot of cuts to programs of interest to local government. I think that's going to get punted to March, so that's really not a lame duck priority anymore. Replenish the Disaster Assistance Fund, that is, I think, going to happen. And that will either move on its own or get attached to the defense authorization bill also. And then I mentioned the bottom two on that unfinished business list. The House Energy and Commerce Committee has passed a, a pretty, when I say comprehensive, I mean, it, it reads like a telecom industry lobbyist wishlist of local government preemptions. So I think a priority is, is keeping that out of any must-pass end of the year legislation. Industry has been lobbying to attach it to a final bill. And then one bill that has passed the House that's on the unfinished business list is reauthorization of federal job training programs. W O I A stands for the Workforce Opportunity and Innovation Act. The House passed a bipartisan job training reauthorization bill. 99% of that is a pretty straightforward, basic job training reauthorization bill. It includes a provision, however, that would give governors the tools to eliminate local workforce investment boards. So I think keeping, if they do include workforce reauthorization in a final bill, keeping that provision that would allow governors to abolish local workforce investment boards out of that final bill will be important. I mentioned the telecom preemption bill. It, it's really like, the question isn't what's in it, it's what's not in it. It would affect everything from local zoning authority, poll attachments, your ability to collect compensation for the use of public rights of way, your cable franchises. It's, it's a blanket preemption of local authority. Zooming in on, on the city of Columbia, this is just some of the, the work we've done over the past year, working on, on federal funding for, for repairs and improved resilience for the Columbia Canal and your water treatment plant. Senator Graham, in the FY 2024 appropriations bill, secured $10 million for the Assembly Street Railroad Relocation Project. In the pending FY 2025 appropriations bills, he secured another $5 million. You received an $80,000 Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning Grant, which, once that plan is done, puts you in a position to apply for a larger capital grant under that program. And then Central Midlands Council of Government received an $8.7 million climate pollution reduction grant, which, I, I was saying this in, in meetings earlier today with staff, kudos to Central Midlands, that was a competitive program. And that 8.7 million is on par with what a lot of larger cities received under that grant program. It was very competitive. I think that was the only one in South Carolina. And then we've been working, you all met with Hud, I think, earlier this year on, on reform and update to your continuum of care program. And I'm going to hit this really quickly, but I think this is important, the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act, the infrastructure bill, that's a five-year bill. And we are now, believe it or not, we are three fifths through the life of that bill. That expires at the end of FY 2026. And, and there are still going to be opportunities over the next few years unless those funds are rescinded. And we can talk about that, to apply for some grants, but a lot of those grants are already out the window. No, please, yeah.
Can you talk about, you said presumed? And I know that's, that's something that every agency gets out grants, every municipality county, state agency. Explain that process. I mean, when is something solid as far as money's going there, there's no way to surrender?
Sure, once, the, the federal term of art is obligated. So once the funds are obligated, which generally means once the relevant federal agency has signed a grant agreement with a grantee, those funds are obligated. So at that point, it's not impossible, but it's hard for Congress to rescind those money, that money. But until then, Congress can rescind money. So you mentioned the, the, so we're three fifths of the way through the infrastructure law, but the Biden administration has awarded a lot of those grants already. So in cases where the grant award has been signed, tough to rescind. But I mentioned you received an $80,000 Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning Grant. That's one program, there's still $2 billion left in that program, FY 2025 and FY 2026. Congress could rescind that $2 billion. So.
Ralph, I called you Frank, sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right, that's all right. So, so I, I think you all have heard me say this before, but the infrastructure law, it was a $1.2 trillion bill. About half of that was. About half of that was the regular reauthorization of highway and transit programs that Congress does every five years. And the other half was money for broadband, water, sewer. A lot of that money, in addition to the competitive grants I mentioned, a lot of that money went out by formula to the states and it's gone out to the states. And, and to the extent there are opportunities out there for the city to receive funding, that's, that's at the state's discretion. And I think a lot of those, that funding is already out to the states and has been obligated.
Did that money be moved around in different buckets or is it?
It's, it's pretty, it's, yeah. When Congress did the infrastructure law, they, they put most of the money into existing programs. So for example, there's, I think, $20 billion for water. That went through the drinking water revolving loan fund and the clean water revolving loan funds. And that's why it went to the, the infrastructure bill was written by the White House and the Senate, which is why most of the money goes to the states. My, my joke is the Senate is where local government funding goes to die. And it's, it's very much a state-centric bill. Albeit, yeah. Albeit, you know, $100 billion of it was competitive grants from transportation that local governments are eligible to apply for. So the Inflation Reduction Act, that's, that's, that's the big healthcare tax and, and clean energy bill that Congress passed. A lot of that funding also has gone out. This was an interesting little thing in the news a few weeks ago. EPA drew down as much money from the federal treasury in one week as they drew down over the last, whatever, year or two years, to the point that the financial markets noticed. Like, what is all this money being drawn down for the federal treasury by EPA? Well, it's the Biden administration getting out all these Inflation Reduction Act grant programs before January 20th. I mentioned the climate pollution reduction grant. That's the one that Central Midlands got, $8.7 million. But most of that money is out. And that's, that's what I'm saying. The, the rebate programs, that money could be rescinded. The way Congress set up those home, those energy rebate programs, that's for appliances and home energy efficiency improvements, whereas the states are going to administer those. And I think last time I checked, one state had their rebate program up and running. I think it's New York State. So theoretically, those, that $8.8 billion could be rescinded in the case of states that haven't got their programs up and running yet. The big piece of the Inflation Reduction Act is, is these 12 tax incentives for clean energy that Congress set up so that not only the private sector, but entities without tax liability, including local governments, these are tax incentives that local governments can claim. As of right now, those are still the law of the land. When we talk about the next Congress, I'll talk a little bit about how those are vulnerable. But as of right now, those, and, and the general rule of thumb, without getting into the weeds, is if the city is making capital investments and they include any kind of clean energy, chances are there's a tax incentive you can claim.
Who do you think is a player in, in rescinding that any?
That's, that's a really good question. So, so these, these tax incentives are popular. When the Congressional Budget Office scored the cost of the Inflation Reduction Act, they, they were wrong. They underestimated how many entities would be claiming these tax incentives. And the interesting thing, the Wall Street Journal has done a really good job of covering this issue. If you look at where, I mean, the tax incentives are being claimed in all 50 states, but they're really concentrated in states like West Virginia and Texas and Kansas and Wyoming. They're all red states. And, and the Wall Street Journal has done some really good articles, in particular in West Virginia, about some pretty major investments that are going to create a lot of jobs. So on the one hand, as Congress looks to do a tax bill next year, and it, and I'm going to get into that, an expensive tax bill, they're going to be looking for offsets. And like I said, the Congressional Budget Office underestimated how much these tax incentives would cost the treasury. They're popular.
Well, it takes a, for someone who's in this business, it takes a pretty good return on investment. It makes it an incredible return.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, we couldn't do it.
What's that?
We couldn't do the projects that were changing.
But I mean, even in the private sector.
But that's the whole reason that it, that nobody, there shouldn't be anybody against it because in the early 2000s, this is what we used when we, when I did projects for Walmart and other folks, was the ITC, which is all this is, is a direct pay. And that's what made projects work. And that's when you saw massive investment from the private sector because the industry could afford to do it. You could pencil it out. You can't do it without it, but we need some of it. This gives us the ability as municipalities and nonprofits and others to, to make a good investment. We, this is in the silver bullet, but man, it sure does sell.
So do you think though, that there'll be some potential carve-out of the public sector from the private sector on this?
That would be, that would be tough, but that's a, that's a possibility because that wouldn't cost the treasury as much. But, but the parts, the, the people claiming the tax incentives that are creating jobs tend to be obviously in the private sector. So I think that's, if, if, if these tax incentives aren't repealed or cut back, it's because of the private sector and the jobs they're creating. And, and the mayor mentioned.
But also, I mean, if you, if you really want to take it a step further, it also is, you have two things you can do with the grid. You can either invest in expanding it or you can invest in protecting it.
Right.
This protects the grid because you're getting free energy and, and therefore you don't have to invest $25 billion into a nuclear reactor that never gets finished.
Right, absolutely.
There's a whole bunch of, I mean, as I was saying, there's a whole bunch of secondary and tertiary type benefits to it that, that don't get talked about a lot.
And, and you're hitting the nail. So when people ask me what's going to happen with the Inflation Reduction Act tax incentives?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I mean, on the one hand, it's, it's a, it's a Biden administration, you know, win. It's.
It's a terrible name.
Yeah. Oh, well. It's what, you know, it's what could get 51 votes in the Senate at the time. But, uh, yeah, because it's, it's, it's everything but an inflation reduction.
You're right. Everything but. You didn't say anything.
Right.
But that.
My favorite place to get wins is called Ethan. Nothing but wins, where they serve everything.
Everything else.
It's the same thing.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question. Is this based on the new administration coming in January?
Yes. And it's, and, and when we talk about these being vulnerable, I think the president-elect has, has made it pretty clear he's not a fan of the Inflation Reduction Act.
Is it vulnerable or?
It's a hard to reconcile.
Golly.
Well, yeah. You, yeah, that's, that's fine.
And, and I'll talk a little bit, but they're looking to do, when I get to the next Congress, I think they're going to move on a tax bill pretty quickly.
Well, how volatile would that become for the general public?
Oh. I mean, people like certainty when it comes to their taxes. So regulations, this is, I think, an area where we're going to see a big change. I can confidently predict that. The, I think it's pretty safe to say the Biden administration has pursued a pretty aggressive regulatory agenda. You see the ones in blue. These are just regulations, some of the regulations that impact the city. Those are, the ones in blue are all final. The ones in green are pending. I, I think the OSHA heat and the OSHA emergency response regulations, those will be repealed pretty early on. The Financial Data Transparency Act, which is a pretty big unfunded mandate on the city, that's statutory. So I think that will continue to move forward.
Do you think it's going to happen with PFOS?
Yeah.
And they're going to dial it back?
They are. Yes. They're, or they're going to try anyway. I don't think they're going to get rid of the PFOS drinking water standard, but they're going to dial it back. They're going to revisit it.
It's more reasonable and cost-effective.
Right.
You dial it back?
Huh?
See, you made that, we're dialing back PFOS, right?
I think so, yes.
That's what he's saying potentially, which makes sense.
And, and I'll also say, and I'll, I'll go to the next slide because, you know, obviously the administration's going to have a different agenda, but, but the Supreme Court's overturning of Chevron is going to also create a lot of uncertainty in the regulatory space. And that's not going to happen all at once, but that's going to happen on a case-by-case basis as certain regulations get challenged in the courts. You all are familiar with Chevron?
No, could you just do a quick?
Of course. So Chevron is a decision from, I think, the early 80s where the Supreme Court.
Supreme Court time, I'd say.
It was the same one. I learned about it in school.
Yeah. The Supreme Court said that in areas where the statute is unclear, the court should defer to the agency with regulatory expertise when setting regulations, and that's been overturned. So we're not going to see like a sudden, like, here's what Chevron means, but it's going to be, happen on a case-by-case basis. I, I think the, the Supreme Court this week heard a, heard a case on FDA's regulation of vaping products that are candy-flavored.
Yeah.
And I, I think that kind of falls under a Chevron kind of challenge. And it's interesting because I think in this case, the court is going to agree with the FDA and say the FDA does have the authority to regulate those, but, but we'll see.
But they're not. That's part of the problem. I mean, I'm going to be honest. The problem is it's an under-regulated market because they're not putting any money behind enforcement.
Right.
That's why our kids are sucking down things that are coming from black market and everywhere else. I mean, we, we've been pretty vocal about it at the State House and other places because I think it's got to get localized for us to have the ability to address it because they're not going to.
Right. Right. So that, but I think that the, the vaping case is an interesting one. I, I also, this is just, this is just me, my opinion. I, I thought it was interesting that the same justices who complained about the courts being overburdened and not having enough judges, opened up a whole onslaught of cases for the federal courts to consider coming up. But, you know, that is, that is the, that is the law of the land now. So looking ahead, finally, this is, this is dated. I had to turn this in a few weeks ago. The, but the Senate, I think you all know that flipped from 5149 Democratic to 5347 Republican. That's done. The House, when I prepared this presentation, had gone from 220 to 212 Republican to 222 to 213. That now looks like it's going to be 218 to 215 and possibly even 217 to 215.
Wow.
So, and, and in the House, if it's 216 to 216, a bill does not pass. So that's a tight margin in the House of Representatives. And, and this was kind of a, a morbid article, but I read an article about how many members of Congress died over the course of the 118th Congress. And then it listed all the members of Congress who are above 80 years old.
We don't read positives.
Right, 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 right. So.
Read positive.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
A new progress.
It was a really morbid article.
The Browns don't die, so I don't care.
So, so really quickly, your, your, your delegation in the Senate, Lindsey Graham is, is a senior member of all of those committees you see listed there. He will be a chair of an appropriations subcommittee. So he's very well positioned. He's on the budget committee and I'll mention why that's important in a little bit. But the, the budget committee is going to be doing a budget resolution and I think Senator Graham is going to be important on the issue of municipal bonds. Oh, and I'm sorry. And then Senator Scott is going to become the chair of the Banking, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
So Lindsey will not be chair of judiciary?
Chuck Grassley. Yeah, which is interesting. Although he's, Senator Grassley is one of those.
Could be in the, on your list.
It's awful.
What falls under Banking, Housing and Urban Affairs?
So that's, that's a fascinating committee. So all of the financial services, so all the financial regulatory agencies, SEC, all of those entities, and then HUD, and then interestingly Transit. So when they write a highway transit bill, in the Senate, the Banking Committee does the transit title of the bill.
We might actually get a chance to get one of those grants.
I was waiting for him to say that, yeah.
And then also, I mean, Senator Scott, as I mentioned, municipal bonds, he's on the Finance Committee. That's going to be critical.
Your shoes on. We're coming to see you.
And then in the House, there's Representative Clyburn, who is, is kind of not on any committees, but is, I'm, I'm, you know, in the leadership, if not officially, but is. And then Representative Norman is on those, on those committees and then Representative Wilson on those committees.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we have to worry that Congressman Clyburn's lost any shit.
No. No, on the contrary. He, he lost the nice office in the Capitol, but nothing else.
It was a nice office.
It was a beautiful office. With the, that really great portrait of, of Shirley Chisholm outside in the hallway. So these are just some key dates. I love the, the first one, January 1st.
Wow. You aren't getting us what the other congressmen, where they land on committees as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Just because they seem to be, have been supportive when we brought things forth before, just like, you know, our rail realignment, they were all there, just so we see where they land.
Absolutely.
If they're willing to help us there, they may be willing to help us elsewhere. And, you know, I like numbers.
Absolutely. Absolutely. These are just some key dates. My, the first one is my favorite. Happy New Year, 119th Congress. The debt limit suspension has ended. That doesn't mean that the federal government defaults on, on January 1st, but at some point, the federal government, the treasury will have to start taking extraordinary measures. That could be as soon as the spring. It could be as late as the summer. The third is the 119th Congress has sworn in. The 20th, the president is. The real big date on this, on this list is, is late February, early April is, is when we have to submit our earmarks to the delegation. We sent a memo to the staff last week to kind of start that process. April through September is the FY 2026 appropriations process. I think you could fill in and in there like January through March, FY 2025 appropriations process continues. And then October 1st, FY 2026 begins. And then these two are important and I'm, they're kind of cue up what I'm going to talk about. On December 31st, a lot of the provisions of the 2017 tax law expire at the end of the year. And then also like a happy new year to the, or happy end of the year to 119th Congress. The Inflation Reduction Act's enhanced Affordable Care Act subsidies expire at the end of next year. Translation, a lot of people's health insurance premiums go up if Congress doesn't do something next year. So looking ahead, some key local government issues, there's going to be a tax bill and I'll talk a lot in detail about that. I mentioned the Inflation, the, the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act was a six-year bill including the reauthorization of highway and transit programs. So the next Congress is going to start working on the next highway transit bill. Like every year, they'll work on appropriations. This is one that's kind of on the radar. FirstNet is the nationwide interoperable public safety system. That sunsets at the end of 2026. So we'll be pushing for Congress to reauthorize FirstNet's existence. Will they rescind any of the unobligated IIJ IRA money, TBD? And then this is now not a question mark, not a parentheses, there will be a budget reconciliation bill and the tax bill will be put into that. And that's going to happen quickly, at least by congressional standards, it's going to happen quickly. And then some other comprehensive mental health legislation is something Congress wants to do something about on a bipartisan level. They always work on the Water Resources Development Act. If they don't finish job training, they'll, they'll work on that next year. They, I, it looks like they won't finish the farm bill, so they'll work on that next year. And the national flood insurance program is, good luck with that one. So tax bill, and when I say it's going to move quickly, as we speak right now, I think the House and Senate budget committees are working on a budget reconciliation, on a budget resolution, which will include instructions for a budget reconciliation bill. A budget reconciliation bill is a bill that can pass the Senate with 51 votes. It can't be filibustered. And they're going to do a tax, they're going to do the tax bill in that and they're going to try to do a lot of other things in that bill as well. You can't do anything you want in a budget reconciliation bill. It has to have a revenue or expenditure. It has to have a budgetary impact. And the, the Senate parliamentarian can be pretty tough on what is and isn't included in, in a Senate, in a budget reconciliation bill. But, but they're going to move quickly on a, on a budget reconciliation bill and they're going to do a tax bill as part of that.
Is that the elimination of particular departments within the federal government?
No, that's a, that's a different animal.
All right. Let me ask you this.
Sure.
There are two cabinet nominees that are, that have been nominated for the position of decreasing.
The Department of Government Efficiency, yes.
That, yeah, that's what it's called. I forget what it's called. What, what happened? What happened? Tell me what happened.
That's a good, so that's.
I'm not, I'm not, I got an idea.
Yeah, I was.
But what can happen? Let me talk about these two persons who have been nominated.
So first of all, those aren't official government positions.
They aren't.
They're not.
Do they carry any weight?
You know, I would go back to, you know, the House is going to be a very closely divided House. So, so I'm not going to say they don't carry any weight, but if you look at the history of similar outfits, you remember Vice President Gore and reinventing government?
That's right.
And there's, history has a lot of efforts to overhaul the federal. I was going to, I can talk about this now. The Wall Street Journal did a great job on this. Deborah joked, Deborah emailed me this article and said, "It sounds like you wrote this article, Ralph." And the title of it is Musk wants.
He's cheating on you, Deborah.
Musk Wants $2 Trillion of Spending Cuts, Here's Why That's Hard. And first question is, is it $2 trillion in one year, $2 trillion over 10 years? $2 trillion over 10 years, that's doable. $2 trillion in one year?
Well, that's the thing that I've heard about in the comment, in the average person, average taxpayer worries about that possibility of whether it's over a period of time, excuse me, or whether it's doable in one year or two years. It's, it's, it's a little unnerving. It makes me, it makes me a little scared.
It makes a lot of people.
And not 401K. I mean, gee whiz.
Well, then worse, you got capital gains tax slapped on you like it was proposed. You would have no 401K.
But that's a, that's a good question.
I almost don't have one.
But when you're a reverend, you can pass the plate, the rest of us got to go.
No, I'm a retired, I'm a retired reverend. No such thing. But I, it's honorary and still coming. Is that going to be talked through?
Yes, yeah. I mean, the President can't, you know, latterly eliminate, I mean, Congress, at the end of the day, Congress has the power of the purse.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes. And, and, you know, the Department of Education is the one that's in the media, they're going to eliminate the Department of Education. The President can't just eliminate the Department of Education, Congress has to do that.
They could get rid of a lot of people there.
They could, they could. And that's a, and it's interesting you, you raise that because one of the things they're going to target is federal employees. That's, payroll is about 5% of the federal budget. So that's, that's $300 billion. You know, so where's the other 1.7 trillion?
Yeah, when you find out there's 40,000 people at the Department of Commerce, it makes you wonder.
Sure, sure. But you're, you know, getting back to Councilmember McDowell's question though, you know, the National Weather Service, for example, has pretty broad bipartisan support in Congress. Is that where you cut? So it gets, it gets, it's easier said than done, is the short answer to your question.
Right.
I think the shrimp off the treadmill.
That's right.
I read that one. So in a tax bill, and I put the first one in bold and italics, preserving the tax exemption for municipal bonds, that's going to be a challenge. And, and about a month ago, I thought we had time to do that education and lobbying piece.
You need us to do, Ralph.
Senator Graham is on the, on the Budget Committee, and so he's going to be working on the budget resolution.
Scott.
And then Scott is on the Finance Committee. Please, please, please don't touch the tax exemption for municipal bonds. And I think the important message there is, is at the end of the day, state and local governments make 75 to 80% of our nation's infrastructure investments, and almost all of those are financed with municipal bonds.
Could you, could you just make sure we get some bullet points on this?
Absolutely. Another bullet point I would make is, is at some point, the Joint Committee on Tax is going to score how much revenue will eliminating the tax exemption on municipal bonds bring in. Joint Tax Staff has never liked the tax exemption, so they're going to score it high. But the reality is, it won't bring in as much revenue as they think because there'll be fewer issuances. They're going to use historical issuances to score the, how much revenue that would bring in, but a lot of local governments won't issue bonds going forward if they lose the tax exemption. The second bullet, I think, is tough when, when you're looking at an expensive tax bill, but we lost advanced refunding in the 2017 tax bill. The SALT deduction is, you know, the 2017 tax bill capped at a $10,000. If Congress does nothing, it goes back to however much you, you know, there's no cap. And then we mentioned, we talked about the Inflation Reduction Act direct pay clean energy tax incentives.
Graham, how does, excuse me.
Of course.
How does tariffs?
That's a great question.
Get into this, it's.
So the.
You're talking a little bit.
Yeah, of course. So tariffs, the President, the way the law is written, the President has a lot of almost unchecked authority to issue or repeal tariffs. So tariff, tariffs, the President, when he says I'm going to impose, you know, 20% tariffs on Mexico, and he can do that under current law. This is interesting. This is from the Committee for Responsible Federal Budget, and they, they did this for the Harris campaign as well, but they said, here's how much, here's the low, middle and high estimates of what President Trump's tax proposals are going to cost. And it, you know, it goes as high as $14 trillion over 10 years. And one of the things they're talking about is, in when Congress, technically right now, under congressional budget rules, you can't count tariff from revenues as an offset. And they're looking at changing the budget rules so that tariff revenue counts as an offset. And they might actually legislate some tariffs so that they get credit for that revenue, which I think is interesting. But when they're looking for that kind of offset, I go back to preserve the tax exemption for municipal bonds. I think it has a target.
The easiest way to think about it is when they talk about that extra tax revenue that they're getting up there, it's coming from our ratepayers.
Right.
Because if we issue the bond instead of issuing it at 4%, which we have to pay 5%, we have to pay more. Well, you and me aren't paying it right here, we have to pay our ratepayers. So instead of 5% of a rate increase to water insurance, it might have to be 5.5% just to cover that difference. Or it could be it's out of our general fund, which means we might need a property tax increase just to make that up. That is serious stuff because we're going to get hit with it. Six years ago, we went through this, and we took a look at our entire bond portfolio and put together numbers just to look at what the effect was going to be to us. It's dramatic. These are the things that they have to understand because it sounds like numbers to them, oh, we get extra tax revenue at the federal level. Well, it's coming, once again, it's coming from the local. The tariff comes from local anyhow, but it's just more coming from the local. So that's, I'm just, from the CFO point of view, that's how we have to look at this.
And let me step back. I mean, I put that in bold and italics, and that's, that falls in the category, I'd rather be too alarmist. I, I think at the end of the day, they're not going to touch the tax exemption for municipal bonds, but this is one I'd rather err on the side of too alarmist than not alarmist enough. I think it's, it's just important. You know, back in 2017, we saw the 2017 tax bill coming for over a year, and we did a lot of educating of congressional staff on why the tax exemption is important. We did, we even did what were called Municipal Bond 101 sessions on, on Capitol Hill for congressional staff. A lot of congressional staff today was in high school or college in 2017. So that's all lost knowledge from those efforts.
I think what you're going to see at the end of the day, the way they're going to look at a lot of stuff is, a lot of, a lot of Republicans believe that the federal government, because of the federal government's competition with the private sector on so many things, you can't, your building is an inflation factor because the federal government's competed against the private sector for things like energy and concrete and asphalt and all these other things. So I think what you'll see is some delineation about trying to separate the growth of the private sector from the public sector, or public sector from the private sector.
And I think, you know, that, yeah, when the sausage is all made, I think, at the end, right?
That would be probably something we'll have to just deal with.
Right. I will, so the other thing, you know, highway transit reauthorization, I mentioned that expires at the end of 2026, so the next Congress is going to work on that. If history is any guide, they're not going to, they're not going to finish it. They'll probably pass an extension of current law to give themselves more time, but the groundwork will be laid. And I think local government priorities are a lot of what they always have been, to the extent we can localize the highway program. There's a new program in the infrastructure law, Safe Streets and Roads for All. That's $1 billion a year that only cities and counties can apply for.
Do they have matching funds for those grants?
It's 80/20 like every other, all federal highway money. The, maintaining the Transportation Alternatives Program, or even growing it, and then of course, preservation of the transit program at the federal level. I might have broken the clicker, I'm sorry.
Be gentle.
Sorry.
That's going to cost you, Ralph. His presentation's over.
The rest of this is not important. I think you might have it on your.
This is not mine. The last one.
It is almost over though. I was just going to say, you know, and your staff is on top of this, but, you know, even though we're not done with FY 2025, you know, now is the time to start planning for FY 2026 community project funding slash earmark requests. And, and your staff has started that process. I will close. What we have pending in FY 2025 is $5 million for the Assembly Street Project secured by Senator Graham. If that's finalized, that would be on top of the $10 million he secured in FY 2024. I'm always a big fan of, you know, it's always good to say thank you. So if and when any of you see Senator Graham or his staff, thank you is appropriate in that case. And then happy to take any questions.
Ralph, what else, what else can we do going into this session to kind of, you know, push forward? I mean, obviously, tax exemption, municipal bonds are very important to us as a city of, for multiple reasons. And Jeff, we might need to educate some of those folks on the fact of that. But also, what else, I mean, showing support for moving forward at this time, you know, I mean, obviously, HUD appropriations, CDPG, I mean, the list goes on, things that we've had great success with.
I think protecting, you know, we are, and I, going back to the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, I think it's important to say, you know, before that, we had the American Rescue Plan Act, and before that, all the pandemic relief. That's, that's over. You know, that era of, of big, you know, $1, $2 trillion federal bills is over. And we're, I think we're entering a period of austerity and cuts. So protecting CDPG, protecting home, protecting Homeland Security Grants, I think that has to be top of our list, is just preserving those core local government grant programs. And certainly preserving the tax exemption for municipal bonds. It sounds like the clean energy tax incentives and IRA are important, so preserving those.
I think if we want to get projects that, that we have diverse portfolios and do projects that, you know, efficiency, I mean, a lot of that also helps us even with the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, being able to do a couple of those projects will allow us to dry our solids coming out, which will save us $2 million a year in landfill and future landfill cleanup costs. Those are things that are important. We can't do those projects if we don't have the direct bet.
Right, right.
A hydro plant, you know, we want to make sure that they continue to fund those programs as we go to reperv our hydro. Our canal plant's headed on the road, but we're going to continue to invest in that. Obviously, you know, we got to have some type of regulation around PFOS, but it's got to be reasonable and affordable. If they're not going to fund it, then they've got to make.
They're not.
Something, you know, that we can, we can actually afford. Can't turn our water system into underfought.
That's correct, that's correct. Do we push back, or do we, do we push back to move forward, or do we move forward to push back?
I think we're strategic about it, depending on the situation.
Case by case.
Yeah. But I think we have to be very strategic going forward.
Based on, based in South Carolina, based on the PFOS controversy here in South Carolina, what will be the general impression for persons on the outside looking for that?
That's, that's a good, because PFOS, yeah, obviously, everyone will want safe drinking water.
Legal issue.
Yeah. But, but that's an expensive, compliance with that drinking water standard for PFOS is going to cost municipal water systems a lot of money. And, and there's not much, there's little of any funding from the federal government, so that has a big ongoing mandate.
That's probably assuming.
That's why we didn't take the deal because the deal that was cut would not even come close to funding the mandate.
And PFOS is a double edged sword for local governments because there's the drinking water standard, but it's also now a hazardous substance under Superfund.
That's right.
So that's, and, and at the end of the day, local governments didn't manufacture or put PFOS out into the world, but we could end up shouldering a lot of the liability and a lot of the cost, right?
Well, you're looking at.
Right.
We're finding a lot of defense now.
We are.
The way the election was.
For sure. Yeah, that, I think that's a safe, that's a safe way to put it. And we were, I mean, we were in the first round of administration, and I think we will be again to a certain extent. And especially when it comes to things like funding for CDPG and home.
I think if you look at it more like offense in that we're, we're pushing forward why it's important. And not play the pushback, it's put more of the, hey, do you want to continue this because of that? And giving it a different approach with, with the administration, because there are some things that, I mean, look, we, we got inefficiencies, they got inefficiencies, I get it. But the reality is, is also, I think it may be an opportunity for us to push more direct funding to, to cities and municipalities, which would benefit us.
And, and you know, as we look at highway transit reauthorization, I, I think the message there is, is, you know, we had some good momentum from the infrastructure law, and obviously, we're not going to have another $1.2 trillion bill, but let's keep that momentum going on highways and transit.
It can't run, infrastructure's needed.
Right.
And if we're, it's got to come from somewhere.
And I think localization of, of the federal highway program to the extent that we can would, it's going to have to be a message.
We do.
I was, ma'am, I was just going to add too. In 2016, we were concerned about cuts in the entitlements, and I don't think, if there was a cut, it may have been only like 10%, but it wasn't done away with. So that is how I'm thinking about it, at the most that they have in this time.
Well, I mean, I just think we got to be prepared to do what it takes to support our citizens, and, and I think some of it's going to be case by case. And at this point, where, like most things, we don't know until, until we see what happens. I mean, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of jockeying where that ends up is always.
It's, and, and for me to sit up here with a crystal ball would be foolish, because I will get back though, Councilmember, you mentioned entitlements. So, so when we talk about cutting $2 trillion from the federal budget, the federal budget is $6.75 trillion. And, and my, it's not, it's not a joke, it's, but it is a joke. My joke about the federal government is, if you look at its budget, it's, it's an insurance company with an army. Because if you look at what it spends, about, about $4 trillion of that $6.75 trillion is healthcare and social security. And then another roughly trillion is defense. So, you know, everything else is, is what's left. So, so, and, and one thing that the President-elect has said is that he's not going to touch social security, and he's not going to touch Medicare. So that becomes.
Did you include debt?
No, no, the debt, debt payments is a trillion dollars a year. Yeah, it's a trillion. So of that $6.7 trillion, give or take, you know, yeah, so, you know, once you take out social security, Medicare, interest on that, other mandatory spending like veterans' health benefits and so on, the rest of it, non-defense discretionary spending is $800 billion of that $6.75 trillion. And that $800 billion is HUD, the National Institutes of Health, the National Park Service. It's 800, you know, some billion dollars is a lot of money, but in the federal budget, it's, it's less than 1/6.
Hmm. Right on.
I like that. I think that helps the odds.
But if social security and Medicare and defense are off the table, that puts a lot more pressure on CDPG and home and, yeah.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
We also have our state lobbyists here with us today. Are we doing a complete update or just some brief remarks? I'm sorry, Ms. Benjamin will come forward for the state legislative watch list for 2025. For the record, Mr. Kyle Michelle, Mr. Damon Hager, and Mr. Caroline Delaney are also here. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Council. Leslie is passing out a list of. Levina is passing out a list of the pre-session legislative watch list. This was a list that was formulated out of the Council Legislative Committee, and it is a list that you all probably have seen before. So we just wanted to give you another copy of that, make you aware that this is the list of things that our lobbyists, as Ms. Wilson introduced them, are here to answer any questions, but there, these are things on the list for them to be watching and be paying attention to. So we wanted to make sure that you all were aware that these are going to be watching. And then in addition, if there are some more specific things to lobby for and against, we'll be monitoring that and be wanting your input for that as the session goes on. There are going to be lots of things that are going to happen during the course of the session, and so you'll always have an opportunity to pull me or one of them aside, give them more direction on things specifically. But we did want to make sure that you are aware that this is the pre-session list and that they're moving forward with monitoring these things for us. So I know that you all have seen this list, or the mayor, or Peyton, or myself have discussed this list, but we are open to any feedback you may have about the list. And if you have any particular questions right now, Ralph, not Ralph, Ralph's like, "That's not, that's not my thing." Caroline, Kyle, and Damon are here to answer those questions specifically. But we just wanted to keep these things fresh in your mind, that these are the things that are on the watch list, things that they will be paying attention to. Again, as the session progresses, there may be other things that come up that you may want them to pay close attention to. They will be scheduling meetings with, with senators and with the legislators specifically to talk about things, to advocate for the city as well as the session proceeds. But we wanted to take this opportunity, since we were talking about legislative issues, to just mention those state-related legislative issues.
Have we started seeing prefiles yet?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Today is House Organizational Session, tomorrow is Senate. Sorry, Mayor, Council. Today's House Organizational Session, tomorrow's Senate Organizational Session. House Prefile, I believe, is on Thursday. There's two House Prefiles, Thursday and then a week from Thursday. And then the first Senate Prefile is next week. I don't know why I'm thinking it may be the 12th, but it may be the 10th. So we will go through those. We read, and truth be told, we don't read every one of them if we know from the first page that it's not something that applies to us. But we look at every bill, we set them aside for review, we make sure the staff is aware of what the issues are. And as Ms. Benjamin said, we're looking forward to getting started.
Any property tax reform discussion going on in the legislature this year? The only thing I have not heard about property tax reform, corporate tax, the income tax that's on the conversation. Now, our newly elected senator had committed to looking at trying to bring the conversation forward of alternatives and ways that counties can, can address on their own tax reform when it comes to property tax. So we'll see where that goes.
I agree with the mayor. The conversation's been dominated by reduction in the income tax, the personal income tax, which, which we are in the process, in the five-year reduction now, which was accelerated by two years last year. But at the same time that we've been doing this, our neighbors to the north and the, and the west have been doing the same thing. So we're.
Everywhere else.
We're trying to catch up with.
North Carolina's been aggressive, especially when it comes to the corporate tax structure as well. Any questions? I mean, we're, we're just, you know, we see what the prefiles come out, and then we begin to start to monitor where things are headed. I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. There might be a court case or two that's got to be settled first so that we, if some issues are coming back or not. But I think there's going to be a lot of discussion up there about some reforms. It seems like the electorate has spoken to them because a lot of discussions moving forward. Hearing none, seeing none, y'all are off the hook.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Great job. Thank you.
With that, where's Mr. Brennan?
Just sent down.
Oh, no. I make a motion that we go into executive session for discussions of negotiation incident proposed contractual arrangements pursuant SC Code 30-4-70A, Section 2, and for the receipt of legal advice relating to matters covered by attorney by a privilege pursuant to SC Code 3470A2. Both of that is transitions and modular homes. Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion hearing none, seeing none? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Mr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.